Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. Now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Shanley McNally will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo community, the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. And now the first item on our agenda is a very positive one, a very good one. It is Exhibit A on page one of our board packet. And it is asking for board approval of East High School's participation in the National Speech Contest in Birmingham, Alabama. Mr. Dell is here and Mrs. Evans, a very proud mother, and her son, Gabe Evans, are here as well. Perfect timing. We'd like them, oh, and his father's here as well. We'd ask that, Mr. Dell, you come up and kind of start the presentation. At first, though, we'll get the motion on the table. And that motion is that the Board of Education approved East High Schools' participation at the National Speech Contest in Birmingham, Alabama. Thank you. Moved in a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. In a second. Mr. Dell, if you could step forward and introduce us to Gabe and also talk about the trip.
Hi, this is Gabe Evans. I want to take just a moment and share East High Speech and Debate Team belongs to three different speech and debate organizations in the state, the Iowa Forensics League, the Iowa High School Streets Association, and the National Forensics League.
Could you press that button on the green light?
Nope, there we go. Yep, that's it.
And in the National Forensics League this year, Gabe Evans went to the national qualifying tournament. And he qualified for the second time in a row to the National Speech Contest. I'd like to take, before I introduce Gabe and let him share anything, I'd like to take just a moment and thank the McElroy Trust, the Waterloo Schools Foundation, Liederman Bales Bonds, Gallagher Blue Dorn, and the Guernsey Foundation who helped run our program and support us, and a lot of other people and organizations too. So I'll let you ask Gabe any questions about our itinerary. I believe you have a copy of that. Okay, and we leave on June 15th for Birmingham, Alabama. Anything, Gabe?
Okay, I had a question. The first time he appear, is this a preparation that he has done in advance? Or is it something that's thrown at him?
They choose a speech at the beginning of the year. And we run from August to May, our program at East High School. And he chooses a selection in August. And then we prepare and we work on that one-on-one on Tuesdays and Thursdays from about, what, 3 o'clock? We have a meeting part first for about 15 minutes to exchange information. Then we work 3 to 5, 5:30. And then, like Gabe, because he's taken a couple of college classes, Gabe and I work on Wednesday at 3 o'clock. We work during my lunch on Tuesday or Thursday. We work, sometimes he's even come in at 7 o'clock. He's a hard worker. You schedule time with the coach and we've worked through it. And he's really followed through and been extremely responsible. I've never been there at 7 and just going, "I'll just have another cup of coffee." Gabe's there at 7 when he says he's gonna be.
I was trying to understand the process because he has to go through all of these phases. And if he's not eliminated, he'll be up here in the next day. So what happens, I mean, does he have speeches prepared for all of those? Is it the same one?
It is, yes. It is the same speech. Gabe did a selection this year. What's the name of your piece?
Daddy's Little Girl.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna say that about 100 times. Daddy's Little Girl. And the nice part is, is that the judges, there's usually two or three judges in each round, and they're from throughout the state. And he goes to, everybody begins and after the first, everybody gets to do three rounds. Gabe went ahead and did seven, National Qualifying Tournament. And then they, if you aren't on the top part, then you're out. And every single round, Gabe, all six of his rounds prior to finals, Gabe had division, had first-place ratings. So probably like 22 different judges saw him and go, "This is the first kid in a 12-person round competition." And that's how strong he was going into finals, so. And he worked very, very hard to prepare to get there. So yes, he did a wonderful job. And it's a nice way that we know who was gonna represent the state of Iowa, that you have judges from all over the state, and you're against everybody else, and it's a big crowd. But Gabe took first place in all of his prelim rounds going into finals.
And on this national level, it would be different judges for the different rounds.
They'll be from Louisiana, Kentucky, Alaska, Arizona. They'll be from all over. So you get great input from those judges in the form of a ballot. Like if there's something that I don't catch, there's still an improvement process that keeps taking place.
How long are the speeches? Do they have to be a certain length, or?
They're between eight and 10 minutes long.
Okay, how long is yours?
9:45.
9:45.
How many people, how many people will be competing? And I know there's different, you know, this is the speech part. How many people will you be competing against, Gabe?
Gabe will be doing dramatic interpretation, dramatic acting. So he moves and he's all memorized. There are some speeches that are not. There'll be about 680 from throughout all 50 states that will be competing. I'm the Dominican Republic. I always leave them out, sorry. And he'll be, he could be competing against them in the same type of elimination process four times a day. And as far as he can go, I don't want to see him till Friday. That means he's going to the awards ceremony on Friday night. And that's what he's practicing for. He's told me that several different times. Says, "My second time here, Coach."
Could you sometime present it to us?
Anytime you'd like me to.
If you'd like me to tonight, he's ready, but that's entirely up to you guys.
Sure, I'm ready.
I tell you what, yeah, do you want to give us a kind of, we don't mean, or part of it, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Maybe the part you love best about it.
Yeah, give him the last three minutes. So start it, yeah. Let me do just a little setup.
Gabe, whatever you want. We're among friends. We're very, very proud of you, yeah.
Gabe plays the role of a father that finds out that his daughter has leukemia. And he goes through the process of many different trying times with her. And he also sings in it. And I'm just gonna let Gabe start about 3:45 right in there and finish it.
Do the whole thing.
You want to move that mic over closer to him?
This is just giving you more practice.
When my daughter came home from school one day with bruises on her arms and her back, I had to schedule an appointment with the principal the very next day. That day, the principal reassured me that he couldn't imagine Katie having any problems in school because she seemed to be adjusting to junior high very well. However, the next day Katie came home and the bruises, they got darker, but the principal reported nothing. And so I took Katie to the hospital to document the bruises. There, the doctor informed me, "Sir, I've taken the liberty to run some tests and, well, the bruises, they aren't the result of ballooning. In fact, sir, I'm sorry to say, but your daughter, she has leukemia. Would you like to tell her together?" "No, it's okay. I'll tell her." "You see, Katie and I, we do everything one on one together." And now Daddy's Little Girl was about to embark on the fight for her life. You know, when Katie was a little girl, her favorite song was, "Blue skies, smiling at me, nothing but blue skies do we see." Oh, and we did, we tried to see blue skies every single day from that moment on. In the world that we live in today, every parent fears outliving their child, but you have to play the cards that you've been dealt. In my piece, Daddy's Little Girl by Jason Sheets, we explore the emotional ups and downs of a father's journey coping with his daughter's leukemia. This is Daddy's Little Girl by Jason Sheets. You see, Katie is a daddy's girl by default. I mean, her mother, as much of a lover, spends weeks at its limit in assignment as a news reporter. So that makes me not only father, but also food supervisor, activities director, and special assignment counselor all at once. Now, it got a little awkward sometimes. I mean, Katie is a little girl after all. So I would find myself thrown into bake sales, "Daddy, Daddy, can you make something else besides Rice Krispie Treats? What about cookies? Can you make cookies, Daddy? I love cookies." "Katie, trust me not at this time. Your dad is possibly capable of making anything else besides Rice Krispie Treats." "Maybe next time, sweetheart." "All right, Rice Krispies, marshmallows, marshmallows. Where are the marshmallows?" Then I would find myself critiquing ballet recitals. "Katie, you are absolutely amazing up there, and I especially loved the way you, the way you was jumping around on your toes and all." "It was great." And last summer, well, she was getting older, so it was about time for us to go shopping for, well, you know, training bra. Katie, what about this one? It looks like it provides some support. "Dad, I'm okay."
"Thank you."
"All right." "Katie, what about this one? It has so many colors on it. Look at rainbows and unicorns and..." "Dad, oh my gosh, stop. You're embarrassing me." "Oh, my bad." "You see, no matter how much I was incapable of handling the job, the job of loving Katie was my pride and joy." "Treatments come and treatments go." "You see, Katie and I, we talk about everything, every single moment of every single day. And she may have things that she keeps for herself, but I'm perfectly okay with that." "We even talk about the leukemia." "Brighten early one morning, I wake Katie up for school and hurriedly brush away the excess hair that fell off during the night." "You see, she knows it's gone, but seeing it, it just makes it more real, more." "Finally." "In the summer before she entered the ninth grade, I find us not shopping for training bras, but shopping for wigs." "God, would I not give for bra shopping right now." "You see, these wigs, they look terrible on everybody. They make it for the adults, and they look bad on the adults." "But Katie was persistent." "Um, Dad, what do you think? Is it okay?" "Katie, you look absolutely amazing." "And she did, even with the tawdry wig." "Katie, son." "Treatments come and treatments go." "When they stop, nobody knows." "I- i- i- is it wrong that I'm joking?" "Vomiting, I mean, come on. I don't even know what to pray for anymore. Do I want the treatments to continue? Well, no, but do I want them to stop? Stopping can mean remission. Stopping can mean three strikes, and she's out of here, even discussing it with Katie and dismissing it when she starts to cry. I just... I just don't know what to talk about anymore." "It's like every single day, I watch Katie fight for her life as I struggle to grasp for control." "One night, Katie came to me and asked if she could go to her first high school dance." "I hesitated as only a father can do." "Well, but Dad, I already have a date with Keith Ross." "Oh, he's so dreamy looking. You'd like him." "Trust me, any preface and team that's coming for my daughter with this amount of attacks, I don't like him." "But I have to admire his good taste." "So I decided to let her go to the dance." "On the way to the dance, Katie and I, and Keith, saw blue skies." "At the dance, they do what is called the grand march. It's where all the couples line up and come down this huge staircase into the dance floor. And I patiently wait as those go by and by and by. Then finally, next, Katie, man, and Keith Ross." "Slowly, step by step by step, she comes into focus and, and she's not wearing her wig." "How could it be more proud of my bald little choir girl?" "You know, she came to me and said, 'Dad, I'm not wearing my wig because I want everyone to like me for what I am. I have no hair, no boobs, and no curves. So beautiful.'" "Katie, she looked beautiful, and she felt it." "You know, the only question I have about this moment is, how many more moments will we have like this?" "The unscientific answer is, too few." "Treatments come and treatments go." "Hospital's taste comes and hospital's taste goes. Mom comes home and tries to stay home more, but mom still goes. The only thing that is a come and go is Katie and God playing darts on the hospital bed. Brighten early one morning, I wake Katie. Katie, what would you like to do? Strain care or strain?" "Come on, Katie, it's time to wake up. What do you want? Strain care? It's a strain." "Oh my gosh, Katie, what's wrong? Why aren't you responding, Katie? Don't do this to me, Katie. Wake up! Katie, this is your father talking to you. Katie, please, wake up." "The nurse comes in and informs me that she has slipped into a coma, Katie! Katie, stay with me. Please don't leave me, Katie. Please don't leave me. You have to fight this. You have to fight this, sir." "I'm so sorry, but you knew this would happen soon, but it's not supposed to be this way." "Oh, God, no, please, oh, God, don't take her away from me. She's everything to me. She's my life. She's my love, Katie. Stay with me, Katie. Please, stay with me, Katie." "Blue skies, smiling at me, nothing but blue skies do I see."
Thank you for taking your valuable time and doing that.
No, thank you. That was absolutely fantastic. So thank you. You make us very proud. Mr. Dell, our thanks go to you and your other coaches, Mr. and Mrs. Evans. We're, I know you're very proud of your son. We're all so great. Now, Gabe is the youngest in the family, right? So he's the baby in the family. Yes. Well, Gabe, but you make us all proud. So thank you for all you're doing, and best of luck in Birmingham. Have a wonderful trip and just good luck with everything. Yes, yes. Regardless, we're proud of you for what you're doing. So best of luck. All right, at this time, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of the trip to Birmingham, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I motion carried. Again, thank you all and best of luck. All right, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. I know we've had some phone calls. We know we've got some people that would like to speak tonight. Before we get into that, what I'll do is kind of read a card. There were some parents I know that have contacted board members about Cunningham and the principal situation at Cunningham. Dr. Norris has asked Mr. Sadler to be here, and he's, I think, been in the district today. Dr. Norris, if you could just introduce Mr. Sadler briefly, and we can all meet him. And then we'll go through and have time, and everybody who wants to talk will have a chance to talk.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Young. I want to introduce to the board Craig Sadler. Craig is, received his bachelor's degree from Florida A&amp;M University, and his master's from University of Northern Iowa, where he worked on his K-12 principalship certification. He's currently working on his doctoral degree at Miami University of Ohio. We found him, he's been in Waterloo before, but we found him most recently at Molton Extended Learning Center in Des Moines. Molton is, was a K-8, and they've been reducing down a grade level a year for some time. They're also an extended calendar, not unlike Cunningham's calendar. And both Dr. Sebring, the former superintendent, and Mr. Ahart, the president, the present superintendent have very high remarks for what Mr. Sadler has been able to do at Molton. So welcome tonight, Craig.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Dr. Norris's invitation to come and introduce myself to the board and to the cabinet.
Is the green light on, Craig?
I believe it is.
Okay. If we could have a little more volume in the back. Thank you. Go ahead.
They're excited about the option to return back to Waterloo. Deep down, I guess I knew at some point in time that it was inevitable to take place. When I had my conversations with the district, I jokingly mentioned at that time, "As it was at the beginning, so shall it be in the end." So I'm very excited about the opportunity to return back to Waterloo and to assume the principalship at Walter Cunningham.
Mr. Sadler, thank you very much for being here. We've heard wonderful things and very much appreciate you being here and look forward to next year as well, so.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, and welcome.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, and at this time, now we'll start the information from anybody that wishes to talk. I'm gonna read some information, but then we'll start the process. Anybody wishes to can step forward then. We've now come to the time when those who wish may speak publicly to the board. I would like to remind each speaker, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left and a red card when your time is expired at three minutes. And at that time, I'll ask that you conclude your remarks. Waterloo is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. Also, at no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific employee of the district because personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. So at this time, I'd like to ask anybody that wishes to address the board to step forward. If you could just say your name and your address and then address the board.
Hi, I'm Brady Gray.
Hold the mic down this little, Brandon. There you go.
I'm Brady Gray, and I'm from 614 Oneida Street, and I'm a parent at Cunningham. And I just, I spoke with Dr. Norris earlier this week. And the reason I'm coming with this question to the board is because of the fact that I don't see what benefit in changing principles has to do with, I mean, will benefit our children at Cunningham. And when I asked Dr. Norris that question, the response I got from him was what, you don't want your child to have a higher education? To me, my children get the best education from my staff, the principal at Cunningham. I had two children that had IEPs, and both of my boys are off IEPs because of my teachers at Cunningham. And they're only in second and third grade. And he told, Dr. Norris has asked me to give Mr. Sadler two months in our school to change things. And I don't see how him coming into our school will change things in two months. I don't, you know, I don't know if there's additional funding Mr. Sadler will get to help to do this or not. I guess that's... Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Please step forward. Just state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Marshall Frazier. I live at 719 B Street. And I work with the PSYIC. Some of you might be familiar with me. I work with the PSYIC meeting here. And I also, I sent, you know, I sent an email to Dr. Norris, and I'll just be brief. And I do also know Craig Sadler, so I don't want to mistake him as far as his abilities at all. I try, I respect him highly for his abilities. My children do go, I have two sons that go to Cunningham. And I'm, you know, second grade and kindergarten. And I highly respect Ms., sorry, I'm a little nervous, but emotional a little bit, but I highly respect Ms. Crowley for what she does. My sons are very successful at what she does. And I don't want her to, I don't want her to, she does a very good job of what she does, everything. I've been in different schools in this district, and I've seen principals who've remained in this, in their schools and did a horrible job in what they did, and they remained in their schools. And parents complained about their performance, and they remained. And it was horrible. I don't know if it's politics in this district. I'm new to this district. And Ms. Crowley did an excellent job. I know test scores that are horrible at times, but not once have I heard that, let's focus on getting them ways to help them take their tests and make sure that their tests are taken. It's always about going around it. But Ms. Crowley did an excellent job with my kids. Their environment, the school is excellent. And there's no way that I can picture her being removed from the school solely on test scores. And a way to help her is to focus on how can we help these kids take their tests so they can pass these tests and so they can do better on their tests. Because I think that's the focal point of her being removed. Am I correct? If I'm not mistaken, her being removed is the test. Am I correct?
No, I think there are a number of factors. And this is time, please, we want you to... This is time, please, we want you to speak to the board and that, now, it's not a time necessarily back and forth. We're not going to take any action tonight or anything like that, but just if you...
What I'm saying is this, is that removing her is an injustice. It's not warranted. No parent was consulted. Everything that they did was underhanded, was not, was not, no parent was, it was like, it just happened. Mr. Sadler was brought in. It was told to us. Nothing was consulted at all. It was like, here, this is what's going to happen. She was, it was a lot of parents, even though a lot of parents are not here, it was not, it was like, this is what's going to happen. And it was an injustice, I think. So, even though the time is not given, that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, again, and actually, if you want to talk about Cunningham or if there's anything else? Not a time to, okay, if not, we'll move on. As for Cunningham, continue. Feel free to express your thoughts. You can, you can talk to board members as well. Dr. Norris, you just briefly want to maybe quickly discuss just a few points, but then we'll move on in the meeting. But if anybody has anything else, you can certainly contact anybody after the meeting tonight or in the future as well. But Dr. Norris, do you just want to briefly?
Okay.
Touch on some things, yeah?
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I certainly understand that you're sad or upset or troubled. I'm glad you came this evening because maybe this evening, and I thank Mr. Frazier for talking. He's on PSYAC and we have a great deal of respect for him. Perhaps this evening represents a new era in parent-school communication. Liz Crowley is a remarkable leader. She's one of the most respected principals in the district and she's served the children and staff and citizens at Cunningham well for the past 14 years. Four, I believe, at Grant and then 10 at Dr. Walter Cunningham. Throughout the 14 years, Mrs. Crowley has presided over many improvements. Opening the new first elementary school built since 1971, being the first school to adopt the leader in me, bringing a lot of pride to Cunningham, the importance of relationships, sense of community. Mrs. Crowley is warm and caring and, but runs a very tight ship. She demands and produces a climate conducive to learning and respectful students. Liz isn't leaving us in Waterloo. She's simply going to work with another group of young learners in the community. And most importantly, in this district, we've been working hard to give principals the opportunity to expand their knowledge and horizons. Many times, this can only be done by tackling another assignment with different challenges. Even though we're sad, we're also grateful that Mrs. Crowley has an opportunity to grow professionally. Liz definitely did not request a transfer, but once she knew it was inevitable, she participated in the selection of her next assignment. So, I welcome further dialogue with anybody here tonight or any other parents from Cunningham School. Let's get together and create a partnership to keep each other better informed. Thank you.
And again, we can, if there are questions or comments, please keep that dialogue going. None, nothing that I've heard and nobody has said anything, Mr. Sadler, we really appreciate you being here. Nobody has anything, but everyone has positive things to say about you. I was going to use a double negative. But we, we appreciate all the interest in the school. It's a good thing. I think on the other hand, everybody's been very, very positive about Liz Crowley, that she does a wonderful job and we all understand that as well. So, we appreciate you all being here and feel free to keep that dialogue going. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And tonight, that consists of the minutes of the April 22 regular board meeting and the May 3 special session. Personnel appointments and adjustments since our last school board meeting. Bills due and payable between board meetings. A donation from the RJ McElroy Trust for emergency funds for Cunningham, Kittrell, Lou Henry, Lowell, Orange Elementary Schools. And then I believe, Sent, Pointer as well, Central Carver Middle Schools and Expo and West High Schools. And then finally, Exhibit E is food service prices, the lunch prices for the next school year for 2013 and 2014. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to be removed? And I'll ask here, now, Exhibit D, bills due and payable between board meetings be removed? Okay. And hearing no other, and it asks for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item D. Okay, in a second.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Exhibit E on page 14. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, and before we get into discussion, I will abstain from voting on this matter because there's an attorney we represent, a client that's paid by one of the bills. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And the chair abstains. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda is Exhibit G. It's on page 28 and this is also regarding basically food service matters. It's regarding the lunch reimbursement for this current school year. And Heather, is it Bathin?
Bathin.
Bathin, excuse me. I'm sorry. Heather Bathin is here. And while she's coming up, I ask that we get the motion on the table. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2012-2013 six cents per meal reimbursement recommended by the Food Service Department.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second.
Sir.
Okay. And Heather, if you could give us some background information on this.
The six cent certification was to help offset the cost of the, for the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. We had to submit worksheets for each grade level, for each menu that we have in the district, which was a total of 14 worksheets. The worksheets had to balance out for the grains, the minimum grain allowance, the minimum maximum protein allowance, the vegetables and fruits for the week, on a weekly balance, minimums. When this was submitted, then they retroactive the six cent reimbursement per meal, which went back to January 1st.
Is this something that we get every year?
Yes, we...
So, if we have an increase in our price, then we look forward...
From the state and federal.
Not the whole reimbursement, but like, if we, 10 cents, we get 6 cents of it. Is that, we get the same amount every year?
The six cent is on top of what we were already receiving.
Okay.
It was like a bonus for completing the worksheets to show that we are compliant.
Okay, thank you.
So, is this just completing the worksheet or following some more restrictions?
We were already following the restrictions. The worksheet just showed how we were, how we were following the restrictions. So, when they come for an audit, it was in black and white, basically.
You know, back in the day, we... There was often a lot of criticism for school lunches. I mean, taste and people didn't like them and particularly then, we had open lunch and a lot of people, you know, went out and there was a lot of criticism when it came back. The last few years, more than that, seven, eight years, it's been pretty, pretty good, actually. Very few complaints. But this last year now, the complaints have started to come again because of the, supposedly because of these restrictions and portions and everything. So, what would we have to do to, to just forget about those restrictions? What would that...
We would have to give up all of our funding from the state.
Okay. And what's that amount to?
It'd be all your free and reduced, the reimbursement for all the free and reduced lunches.
Yeah.
And the, which is...
So, how much total? I mean, I really, you know, I don't like federal subsidies to begin with. But particularly when they really reduce the quality of the product that we give, so...
Yeah, I can't see that, there would be no way to balance out the budget at all, doing that.
So, can we, can some people elect to eat lunches as we had them before all these restrictions and then, and just pay more?
No.
Can we have a duplicate lunch system?
No, we can't do that.
Why?
Because the, because there's restrictions. You have to follow it across the board for the Healthy, Hungry, Hunger Free Kids Act. And that you can do.
Not two lunches, but, but a, one without all these restrictions.
No more fruit and vegetables.
Well, they could have them if they wanted, but they could also, you know, have a cheeseburger if they wanted it.
We still offer cheeseburgers. It's just we use, you know, they're checking, they're making sure there's no, you know, watching the fat level, the sodium level, making sure that it's a whole grain bun versus, you know, just make it more nutritional.
So, are we providing more opportunity than to bring lunches from home if the, if the school lunches are no longer very attractive?
That's always been an option.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's the option, but I don't, I don't think any of the, none of this is unique to the Waterloo School District.
No, no, yes, it is, but that doesn't mean we have to...
No, but it does, I mean, it reminds me of, was it the drinking age to 21? That you could have whatever drinking age you wanted, but you would get no federal highway funds if you didn't turn it to 21. It's, it's a de facto requirement, federal.
And often, we think that's not feasible, but often it is. It's just a matter of...
We would lose, yeah, a lot of funding.
Well, that was my question. How much would we lose?
We'll get you, we'll get you the amount, La. We'll be happy to get it.
I think we've got, I think it's in the...
I don't think we just automatically roll over when they say, oh geez, you're going to lose federal funding. Okay.
Well, I'm going purely off memory, but it's about half of the revenue we get is from federal and state reimbursement. So, our lunch prices would have to double.
And they're what, a dollar?
Oh, no.
Something, no?
Yeah.
220, yeah.
10 cents.
220.
And we'd probably have a problem offering free and reduced.
Yes.
That would really be a reduction in that.
We wouldn't be able to do it.
No, we couldn't do that. No, no.
But La, have you had a lot of complaints on the lunches?
We have. Because I have two students at West PSYAC that love the lunch. They spend a lot of money on their lunch.
Okay.
We haven't received many.
And it's relatively new thing. We didn't hear complaints for years. Now, all of a sudden, we're starting to hear complaints again.
I haven't heard it, so just...
Yeah, I haven't heard very many either.
And Heather, we're talking about more macro things, I guess. It's not with, yeah, with what you're doing or anything like that. We're talking about kind of from the bigger picture level, so.
We're talking about theory.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussions? Okay, Heather, thank you very much. Okay, if not, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. All right, the next item on our agenda, we've got some school policies to review, two of, two sets. The first is just for first reading. This is for information only. The next, we'll actually vote on for second reading. But for first reading, we've got two policies here for, it's number 401.3 regarding nepotism and then 602.7 regarding multicultural and gender fair education. Those, the edits and the proposed changes, really kind of some cleanup of some language and existing policies is in our board packet on pages 32, 34. This went through the policy committee review process and what we've got here is for first reading. Up for discussion now or when it will be on, up for approval likely at our next meeting in June. But this time, are there any questions or comments from board members regarding the policies?
On 401.3...
Regarding nepotism, yeah.
Yeah. What's the definition of family?
It was listed. It was listed somewhere. Okay.
Immediate family, spouse, children, siblings, parents, or relatives.
Oh, yeah.
It's in the second paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, again, if there are comments between now and June 10th, please forward those to Mrs. Arndorfer. And then, but it should be up for vote at, for approval at our next meeting. The next, we'll go on to Item I. That is, starts on page 35. This is for second reading, so adoption of the changes to four policies that we discussed for first reading at our last meeting. Those policies are 305.5 regarding the administrator designee, 408.2 regarding probational status of teachers, 510.4 regarding the philosophy of high school athletics, and then finally, 510.5 regarding the athletic transfer rule. Recommended motion is that the Board approve the following policies: Administrator Designee, Probational Status of Teachers, Philosophy of High School Athletics, and Athletic Transfer Rule. Thank you. It's been moved for approval. In a second. Okay, thank you. End discussion. And I don't think there's been any change, I don't believe, to any of these policies.
I just had a question. I think I might have been gone the first reading, but on the probational status of teachers, but it's saying the first three consecutive years of employment of a teacher in the same district are probationary period. And then it's saying new employees who have successfully completed a probationary period in a previous school district, are all of them three years, all other districts?
Yes, that's state code.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so they'd be three years and then they come here and they have a year, right?
No, I think now it's saying you start over.
Yeah, they start over. Actually, if you completed by code the three-year probationary period, when you would come to us, you would have your normal two-year as a new, as a new teacher, you're evaluated the first two years of your employment and then you would move on to the three-year cycle until our legislators change it to a one, an annual evaluation cycle.
Is that what this says then?
Yes.
It says new employees who have successfully completed a probationary period in a previous school district in Iowa will serve a one-year probationary period.
Right, but we have contract language that extends that. It's not technically a probationary period. It extends in terms of our ability to evaluate.
Okay.
Okay, so if somebody came here from 10 years in another school district, they still have the two-year?
They still are evaluated, the first two years of their employment.
Right, because this is our district and we do things differently and, okay.
By code, their first year in the district would be their probationary period. And what that would call upon is termination, a difference in termination proceedings, technically.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. And that ends the actions on our agenda. Next, we'll hear from the superintendent's report. Dr. Norris.
And I have nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we'll hear information from board members. And I'll start with Lauschmidt.
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Andrea Sparks?
Nothing tonight, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you. Bernice Richard?
My comments are in relationship to our school district. We know that this is a pretty anxious time in our school district. Even so, we cannot lose our focus on why we are connected to this district. It boils down to educating the students in the Waterloo Public Schools. When we read our mission statement, the first two lines says, Shandali Red. The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of educating and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college and so on. I'm not going to repeat all of them. We know that some students will make adequate and above-average academic growth every single year. And it doesn't matter what building these students are assigned to. Then we have some students who will need an extra boost or extra resources and extra time to gain a high level of academic growth because we have so many different learning styles. Well, what is best for our students is our focus, student achievement, academic growth. And it should, it should be our... Student achievement, academic growth, and it should, it should be our top priority because this is why we are here. We are here to educate all of our students in the Waterloo Schools. And we should put all of our energy and our focus on that particular goal that we have set forth for this school district of educating all of our students.
Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you, Bernice, yeah, very well said, thank you. Sue Flynn?
I just want to encourage all students to finish strong. We have less than three weeks left to school and this can be kind of a slacking period, so finish strong. I want to also, we don't have another meeting to congratulate all the graduates of our, um, three high schools. That's a cool occasion and it's fun to, um, see, um, everybody get that diploma. And I just wanna thank our staff for working hard, it's been a good year. And, um, also our spring athletes, just thanks for perseverance in this weather.
Yes, and Shanley McNally?
I actually missed our last, uh, April board meeting because I had the pleasure of representing our district out in Washington DC with the Cedar Valley Coalition on their annual trip out there. And even though earmarks are gone at the current time, I just wanted to say that I think it's always a great experience to be able to go with people and leaders from our community, represent this wonderful, diverse, amazing school district that we have and get in front of our congressional delegation out there. So it was a really great opportunity and I'm thankful that I was able to do that. And I'm always proud to be able to represent Waterloo Schools, so, thanks.
And Shanley, thank you for going and I know it's a, a big time commitment as well, but thank you for doing that. All right, if, if there's nothing further, our, um, again, as, as was discussed, our, uh, high school graduations start next week. Wednesday is Expo and Thursday is West and Friday is East, which is kind of amazing. Our next board meeting in, actually in two weeks, when our regularly scheduled board meeting would be is Memorial Day. So we'll obviously not have a meeting then. So our next meeting will be June tenth. It'll start, our summer schedule, at least for June and July, starting at five PM. So we'll meet, um, here at five PM then on June tenth. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned, thank you all.